He might need to hit the little button down there.
Oh, it's already stopped recording. It's still recording. Okay, apparently recording. Okay, let's um I'm gonna open up the work session. June twenty fourth, two thousand twenty five, City of Depot Bay. We don't need a roll call, but we are all present. And you're gonna get accepted.
I do not see Kessler or Rossin yet.
She's gonna be sobering in here. So, I just wanna introduce Mary and Renee from our DEQ. And they're gonna be helping us facilitate some information that's critical for going forward with the Gleneadon service district. And what's happening is, Gleneadon did contact Walter Chuck, our new county commissioner, and asked him to step in and assist us with coordinating just conversations and information gathering at this point. So, he has agreed to do that for us. He cannot make it tonight because he has a last court permission meeting, and he did not want to miss that. So, he is more than willing to assist us in any way we need. So, that's nice to have somebody on our side as well. So, I met with he and Renee, or with Mary, the other day, and told him that this would be a good time to set up a work session to go forward and just start conversations. Because we're gonna need legal help and help from CPAs to go forward to determine what we wanna do with Gleneadon.
Well, we've determined what we want to do with Gleneadon.
Right, but we've got to work through the system. We've gotta have lawyers, and we've gotta have, going forward, we need another agreement firm to make this work. So, Mary, I think I'll turn this over to you then if you want to. I know you've been working with Gleneadon as well.
Yeah, so I think we'll just do an introduction.
Oh, yes.
What Renee and I do.
Yes.
And my name is Mary Camerata, and I work for DEQ about five years now. A long time, and I'm part of what's called the Regional Solutions Team, which is a position where I'm like a liaison between our agency and communities, also with the governor's office. So, I work with Courtney Flathers, who's the governor's coordinator. And Courtney and myself and Business Oregon have been working with Gleneadon as well as, you know, trying to help Depot Bay through this transition period. And so, my colleague is Renee. She can introduce herself.
I was gonna add for Mary, though, that she also works as a liaison between DEQ and other state agencies.
Oh, yeah.
Which is really helpful for DEQ. So, yeah, that's definitely one of the important ones. So, Renee Camerata, I have been here before. I recognize some of your faces, and every now and then I get to talk to Brady about different things, like when we did your permit reel not too long ago. So, I am DEQ's Western Region Wastewater Permitting and Compliance Manager. And I also manage the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, which is a low-cost loan for communities that are interested in making water quality improvements, either what we call a non-point source, like stormwater, or even like purchasing land to protect their drinking water supply, all the way to, you know, actually doing specific improvements to the sewage treatment plant or sewage collection system. This is a wide range of projects that we fund through our low-cost loans, you know, cities fund. So, I beat Mary at DEQ by twelve years.
Well, you started when you were twelve.
I mean, I wasn't twelve when I started. It's only been years.
Oh, thirty.
Thirty, thirty-seven years. I'm at DEQ for thirty-seven years, and I've had a really, really good, a good time. I've worked in a variety of programs myself, but water is my favorite. So, I've ended up, I think, sticking around in water probably for the last bunch of years.
Oh, yeah. Just I don't really wanna be bigger than life.
No, she probably doesn't.
I don't control that.
Water versus wastewater is what you're saying, right? You like water.
I like water, like clean water. Yes, and I, so I think that's why I ended up in wastewater. I'm originally from Hawaii, so I'm surrounded by water. And so, yeah, and I am partial to surface water. I don't, you know, groundwater very important, but I can't see it. So, I am like an ocean, ocean baby. So, I love coming to visit the coast. So, anytime, anytime you guys want us out here, we'll, we'll come running.
Yeah, that's awesome. That's good news.
I love it. I love it. I love it out there. Um, yeah. All right, so you wanna do a little update on Gleneadon, what you heard and what you know?
Yeah, sure. So, so when they receive the termination notice that, you know, that you're gonna discontinue service, they have been working to, first of all, they did a facility plan, which is kind of a normal process where you get what your options are. And so, they did that. And they had one option was to basically do a wastewater treatment plant near Poberry State Park. That was unacceptable to state parks. It's not a compatible use. So, they understood that, yes, their pump station is in there, and then that pump station pumps their wastewater to Depot Bay. So, they've come up with another location near the airport. And they are, you know, planning to run an ocean outfall. I mean, it's Wallace Street. They've also met with a group that looks at the permitting to, you know, do ocean outfalls. It's called a renewable field permit. And so, they've had conversations with both the state and federal people about what facilities they need to do. I've had conversations with them about if you're near an airport, you have to be careful of how big your facility is, whether you're compatible with that. So, they've done a lot of work just evaluating whether that site is workable now that the Poberry Creek site is not workable. They have a dollar amount, which I think was running somewhere between thirty-five million and forty million dollars, somewhere in there. Their next step would be to start moving in towards engineering, like they actually engineer it more. And, you know, they haven't really started looking at raising capital for that large amount of money. I mean, it's, you know, it's hard to build from scratch. But, so they've done some, you know, the facility plan, so that's a big step. And so, I think the next step, like I said, would be to get more funding, to move into an engineering, a design phase. And then, you know, where are we gonna get the actual construction money? They could get some of it, you know, from Clean Water State Revolving Fund, which Renee had mentioned. But it still is a very low sum of money. So, so they have made progress. They're not to the point where I think your five-year sort of termination notice would put it about twenty twenty-seven, I believe. It takes anywhere from two to three years once you have approved plans, you know, to do your construction. So, you know, we're sitting at twenty twenty-five, and they're not, they haven't moved into the sort of that designing phase. So, that would, you know, so anyway, that would probably, you know, they wouldn't be ready likely by twenty twenty-seven to be able to have it built and permitted by that timeframe. So, that's kind of where they're at with. And they've had funding meetings with the different various agencies. And so, we talked about, you know, where the possibility of the money would come from. They're also, you know, looking to the state if the state could participate at all and help. You know, Select's got three million dollars. I mean, three million dollars, they're a project, it's like a eleven million dollar project. So, three million helps, but you know, where's, and for this delta for letting, you know, thirty-five to forty million dollars is a big delta for them. So, yeah, that's where they're at. We meet with them, I don't know, probably once a quarter if they have questions about permitting. Or, again, remember, I work with the other state agencies, so I can bring them to the table if they need those kind of conversations.
Can I, can I talk a little bit about the facility plan? So, when Mary says facility plan, that is DEQ lingo. And what it is, is an options study, you know, to look at several different options. Usually, they pick three. They look at three options to detail them out, detail their costs out, kind of do some preliminary environmental survey, and basically cost it out and look at whether or not they have, you know, what the fee structure would need to look like. So, so really, it's a fairly hefty plan. And then, usually, the community recommends an option. So, the reason that they put together a facility plan is because you're gonna need something like that to show the different funding agencies that you are moving along a pathway that makes sense. You know, that you can pull something out of their hair and say, I just wanna know that. That you've costed it out. Some funding agencies which rely on median income, like US Department of Agriculture has a program which most coastal communities don't qualify because your median income is too high. But if you want their funding, for example, you have to pick the cheapest option. You can't pick the higher cost option. But if you're coming to DEQ, you can pick whatever option we believe that you can fund. And so, just the reason I'm sharing a little bit more about the facility plan is a lot of times, a community, even one like Depot Bay, you know, the life of the sewage treatment plant is twenty to twenty-five years. Somewhere between twenty, before you get to twenty, usually, you pick up and hire a consulting firm to kind of start working on a facility plan for the next twenty to twenty-five years. And the facility plan is something that they're kind of geared towards because of the way that various agencies model money. So, another word, though, for a facility plan is a preliminary engineering report. So, you hear it called different things. DEQ's thing is a facility plan. That's what we call it. There are different sort of versions. You could do a preliminary engineering report that didn't, you know, look at a lot of options and just has a recommendation. But then, most of the funding agencies are gonna ask you, what about this? What about that? Did you consider this? So, they like a comparison. And DEQ is one of those agencies that if you come to us for a loan, we're gonna ask you what you plan, what kind of planning have you done? And how do you know that this is the best, you know, the best option for your city?
Pardon me, Renee, but there's kind of another reason for why we would like to look into a facilities plan, which as was explained is because of the age of our plant and what it's running to take and to keep it going past a certain point. It's a little more expansive on it than a sewer master plan, a wastewater master plan.
It's more detailed.
It's more detailed on the plant. And how does it look now? How's it functioning? What's the future gonna look like? What's gonna be needing to be replaced sooner rather than later? The older our plant gets, we're finding out more we need one. We've never had one. So.
And I would add that it also extends to the collection system. If your collection system is really old, if it's leaky, as in, by leaky, people always think, I mean, the sewage leaks out, but that's not what happens when your, when your collection system is leaky. What we really mean is groundwater and stormwater get into the sewage pipes, right? And they increase the flows to the treatment plant, which we don't want. But the pump stations, the pump stations are covered. The sewer lines are, can also be covered in the facility plan. So, basically, giving you a big picture look of the whole wastewater collection and monitoring system.
It will confirm what needs to be done. And because we know that we're gonna have to do some work if we keep Gleneadon, keep servicing them, because we're gonna have to upside. And even though our sewer master plan already calls for some of this, we're gonna have to do it. We talked about the fact that we're probably gonna have to upsize the harbor lift station. So, these are the types of things. But this facilities plan helps us figure out what all that looks like. And then, it also gives us some rate projections and capital projections, which is also very important.
Can I clarify then?
All right, yes.
Thank you. Are you saying that we are also doing a facilities plan with Gleneadon is, and we are too?
I want the city to do one, but we haven't begun one yet. I'm just getting some initial cost estimates. I'm in a, I'm in came out of their conversation. Their facilities plan, they've already had one. They did one in Gleneadon years ago, and talked about all the things they need to be doing and should do then.
No, no, for, I'm talking, we're talking two things, right? Facility plan for them to develop a new outfall.
That's separate.
Right, and then you're talking about one, you want the sewage to develop.
For us.
Right.
So, a master plan is more what Department of Land Conservation Development uses when you're looking, you know, that whole periodic review and managing planning documents, whether it's billable lands or, you know, employment lands, things like that. But, so they use master plan, but the facility plan has much more engineering. And, you know, you can design it where you're only looking at just for Depot Bay, or you can do it, I mean, that could be just Depot Bay going alone, or you can do Depot Bay with Gleneadon, you know, what's going on with that, and then there could be other options as well. And so, we can talk about, you know, where would that money come from for that, if you want. But, yes, so Depot Bay, you know, your plant was built very, very long ago. It was upgraded in the two thousand. So, you know, like we're saying, usually twenty-year life. So, you're due, just regardless of what happens with Gleneadon, you're due for just checking out your own plant and getting, you know, a list of things that need to be done. And, you know, there's, when I talked to Brady, you know, a while ago, and he said, hey, you know, we bring our sewage, it goes down to the bay, and then comes up. Well, you know, we can bring in Department of Transportation. Maybe you can, you know, put the wastewater line across the bridge. You know, things like that that could save the city some money if you didn't have to have, you know, some crazy pump stations or, you know what I mean? Again, it's a fresh look at, you know, what's currently going on in your system and then what are the possibilities? You're not committing to anything, but it does give you, you know, numbers and options. Then, as a city council, you can discuss if you wanna move forward with the next phase of that, which would be to do more engineering and then eventually do funding and build out or fix the things that are identified in the facility plan.
Identifies a lot of different options and technology that wasn't available twenty years ago. That's more available now, you know, on how they do things, so.
It's definitely a planning piece. I would be, I would add to just be very transparent that at this point in stage, at this point, it's not a requirement. It's voluntary, right? It has to do with how the city wants to plan. Brady's doing a great job of operating the plant. When the plant starts to experience violations because it's overloaded or, you know, things start to break down, then DEQ will step in and say, it's not voluntary anymore. This is what we have to do. We don't want that. So, yeah, we're not there yet, but it's just, I wanna be sure that I'm not portraying it like it's something the city has to have. It's something that they should have and something that DEQ will make you have if we don't see that, you know, the treatment plant, well, the treatment plant starts to violate its permitting.
And our aging infrastructure with the collection system is getting old. There are choke points now in harbor that really need to be addressed.
So.
It's gonna be great.
I apologize a little bit. Kinda confused. So, the Gleneadon folks, it sounds to me like they're making steps forward.
They're at, they're at a certain point, yes, they've made some steps forward.
Okay.
They haven't taken the next step, which would be engineering, like actually, they, they made a decision, okay, we're gonna go to the airport, you know, that. That is a new decision for them, so they're gonna say, hey, that looks good. Now, they have to do more engineering, which they, you know, I don't know if they started that piece yet.
So, no roadblocks, sending it out to the ocean?
No, they have to study that. So, they identified.
So, it's not burned up.
Yeah, so they went to that meeting, the special meeting about the outfall and other impacts. So, they learned what studies they need to do to determine if they can go out to the ocean at that spot. Like when they tried to do the state park, there was a lot of species there and just the use of the park. And so, it would have been very challenging to get a permit actually for that location. This seems promising, but they have to do a bunch of studies. So, that's why it takes a while, because it's not just, okay, let's go build it. You also have to get all the permits associated with the plan. So, so they've been working on some of their studies related to, you know, well that outfall look.
So, are they exploring other technology? And you had, gave you some good information on that to where you don't have to go up to the ocean?
Yeah, there's recycling type of water systems.
Yeah, it's, and we like to encourage those, except it rains more on the coast.
But if you had a tertiary recovery system that you could use for golf courses and, you know, non-podable water systems.
Yeah, no, we love that sort of stuff. And what it does is it usually helps reduce the amount of flow that you have to discharge, treated wastewater, but it doesn't always get you all the way there.
Right, is that part of their plan to live with this?
They have not talked to me about that.
Can you encourage that? Would that be something?
Oh, we encourage it, yeah, we encourage it with everyone.
So, will you come and help fund that as well? Would that be part of it?
If they wanted to do that, yeah.
See, that's a, that would be really add benefit, especially for, you know, watering plants and so on. So, I recall some certain type of.
Yeah, we try to, we call it like purple pipe too. There's like, you'll see businesses in Portland where, you know, they've been building all these huge buildings, and they all have like many wastewater treatment plants on them. And then, they, if you're up at OHSU, they just recycle the water back to the toilets. That's like perfect. That's like ideal, because it's right there, right? And it's part of the big buildings maintenance requirement. But cities have done that on, you know, on sort of another level. Just not a lot in Oregon, because especially on the west side of things.
Well, they have, Salton Shanana's a golf course, they water quite a bit. So, there'd be an opportunity for them to incorporate that idea into their system.
Yeah, as a part of.
HGV, right, Curb the Money and Reach Water, just kidding. So, it's all part of the state.
The problem that we have with recycled water, we, you know, DEQ thinks it's a great idea. We have rules that support it. It just happens to be sort of voluntary. So, it's better if, this is gonna sound a little bit strange, but I have examples where a city owns the golf course. So it's better if, this is gonna sound a little bit strange, but I have examples where a city owns the golf course. No problem, right? They don't have to get the golf course on board, they don't have to deal with the golf course. And that sort of situation works out well. And then I have another situation where a city, you know, is very close to a golf course, um, as far as they have a good relationship, but the golf course is not, they don't own it. So the city is almost, I wanna say hostage, but the city does kinda have to, you know, snap to run the golf course, wants the money. And so, I mean, wants the, wants the treated wastewater. So there's pros and cons to both of those approaches, but I think the, the pro from, um, you know, a municipal sort of perspective is that if you own it, you control it. Right? So we have cities that actually own agricultural land that they irrigate over. We have cities that rent agricultural land. And the ones that rent, I will always, you know, get a call saying, hey, can we do this with our wastewater? Because the farmer doesn't want water right now, he wants, you know, something else. And so I'm like, yeah, I can't let you do that, you can't discharge to that stream, because your permit doesn't allow it.
How about, uh, moving it on ships? If you pump that water to a ship and you use it in an arid area where they can use it for their golf course? Something, for example, um, you're transporting that water, it's tertiary water, non-human capable water, but you could add to someone else's benefit by having that water.
If the, if the community can figure out a way to do that, um, I don't think that that, I've heard any kind of proposal like that. The tertiary treatment, um, I mean, everybody, I mean, like you go to California, especially Southern California and, and some of the, um, the drier, um, states down there. I mean, they're, they're turning around and drinking it now. Sandy River does, Sandy River does, it just.
Well, you can reprocess, yeah, you can reprocess that water now, bottom of the water.
Yeah. Yeah.
And you do, that's what the space group does, I mean, there, you can do whatever you want to.
Well, we're not talking about a tertiary treatment system here, that's, that's.
And, and, and again, that's, you know, Leniden is exploring an option, so that, you know, we certainly can bring up. They haven't really talked about recycling water, they were just more focusing on where can they put the plants? And then, you know, they, they realize that they're gonna have to have some discharge. Um, but we certainly can bring up recycled, recycled water with them to make, consider that as part of the package, but. You know, so that's what's going on with them, but with you, with depot bay, um, we also wanted just to make sure that you understood kind of where you're at with, with planning. Or you haven't done the planning in a while, since two thousand nine, I believe. So you really are way overdue to, um, explore this and, and get, you know, numbers, um, you know, what, what would it, what do you need to do to upgrade your plant? If anything, they're probably like, Brady has pointed out, you know, there's some constriction in some of your pipes, maybe you have to fix some pump stations or whatever. But, you know, what would the cost be to the city to not have Leniden versus what would be the cost to have Leniden? I think, I think, I know there's been a decision like, no, we're not gonna do this, but to, to have, you know, fresh numbers. I, I know there was, um, Eco Northwest had done some kind of study, you know, which is there, have that.
No, this is the, our water and sewer rate study, but it dealt with some of the, um, capital costs as well. That was from August seventeen, twenty twenty.
Right, right, so, you know, looking at some of those assumptions and whatnot would be, you know, good just to make sure, you know, that you have accurate numbers, um, for, for the city. Because again, when you think about, you know, like not having Leniden, and again, we're not trying to talk you into anything here, we're just giving you, you know, just information. If, if you, if you take away, you know, say, okay, we're not gonna have that flow, you still have set costs, you still have to pay for Brady and, um, it's been a long time. And you still have a certain amount of chemical and you still have to fix your own city infrastructure. So, so now you, you, you don't have that flow, which again, there'll be some savings, but it won't be like, let's say, half of your, you know, half of your sewer fee will be less because you don't have Leniden, that's not how that's gonna work. So just be aware of that.
Can I just ask for the historical background of the check? I mean, the city, the city made the determination that we were not gonna proceed forward with, with Leniden as part of our system. And that information was based on the fact that we knew that our, our wastewater plant would not be able to handle the inflows that are coming from them plus our own planned growth. And without some, 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 some substantial costs. But if we were to terminate the agreement, that we would not have to handle the increased inflows and that the size of our plant would be adequate to handle depot bay, we would be, we would still need to do upgrades to the plant and those, you know, replace the pumps.
In, in, in a collection system too.
Right, so, so.
Would have to upsize the pipe, but you could, you'd have to main slip line and do a lot of maintenance upgrade then.
Sure. So, but that was, that was part of, I believe, what the capital costs were that were associated with the last rate study that the city did. The increase in our sewer rates, et cetera, to, to help offset some of those costs, et cetera. So the decision was then made that because we cannot handle their inflows without significant development in our wastewater plant, that it made more sense for the city to, um, take it on our own and, and deal with our own inflows based on the plant that we have.
Right.
And so, the decision was a decision and, and that's great. I guess my, my real question about all of this is, um, has the city and Leniden ever looked at the concept of creating a sewer district? And removing the management of the wastewater treatment plant from the city entirely and creating one large district that handles all of the sewage? And whether that handled, is handled out of this facility or whether it's handled out of a new facility, it would all be handled by a sewer district? And all of the, the fees and costs and all of the things that are associated with that would be shared among thousands of people, thousands of houses as opposed to just the city of depot bay? And so I'm, just a question, I don't know if it was ever discussed or addressed or anything when that whole process was going on.
Could I just clarify something? Okay, I wasn't here during all these discussions, but I've read these ad弥mazium. Our growth, their growth, the, the fact that we would have to, um, do work for a city was not the reason, the sole reason why. There was a lot of acrimony. And I think they just decided that they didn't wanna fight about flow versus, versus DEQ's that, that they had enough.
Right.
I, the termination letter even kind of allused to that and everything has been about that. So, because we will have to pay for any upgrades we do and we will have to do that. Just even if Leniden's not there, the system's old, we're going to have to do that.
Right, but we also didn't wanna dig up our town and, um.
But we're still gonna have to, that's the key, people don't understand that.
Well, we wouldn't have to do some of that, but it won't have to be all of that. And one thing that hasn't come up, we discharged, it just got up from Brady. We discharged all that flow into the ocean off North Point, fourteen, in a fourteen foot pipe with a diffuser, right into Kelp Bed, right into the area where rails use. This is pharmaceuticals and caffeine and, you know, PFAS, whatever it's called.
Yes, that's.
The E F A S.
We cause people on E F A S.
Yeah, and it's like, no.
But that's not going to change.
It will.
Then the flow will be reduced, but we're still gonna have to.
Why are you talking over me when I, I don't.
I don't apologize, I apologize.
Go ahead, I apologize.
Thank you. Um, so I am concerned about the ecological impact of our current with Leniden. And now with the governor's housing initiative, Leniden is gonna be required to have ADUs, so that population is gonna increasingly further. And we have a very, very sensitive environment. And maybe with a facilities upgrade plan, we can look at doing better for our local ecosystem by extending the pipe, by having, um, upgraded, um, treatment, you know, getting, I don't know if we can get rid of microplastic and PFAS and pharmaceuticals, that'd be extremely expensive. But we could get it beyond the close shelf where it is right now, where the existing reefs basically hold the, and recirculate that water in our near shore. So I'm, I'm, for many reasons. It's nicer as a kid, I won't get upset anymore. Okay, so yeah, that's, but it, we did talk about not needing to do as much work and have less flow and impacts on, on our ocean.
I mean, I've thought about the district and trying to work with them to bring it all together, I don't, I don't see it happening.
Right, but that was back however many years ago and I would assume that just like this council changes, the Leniden Sewer District changes and the people in charge there change. And so, I mean, I would think it would make sense to at least talk about what a sewer district might look like. And, um, I just think there's, there's much more strength and power in large numbers particularly when we're dealing with forty million dollars worth of development. And whether it's their forty million dollars or whether it's our ten or fifteen million dollars, we're a town without a tax base. And coming up with, uh, ten million, let's just say it's ten million dollars. The, the, the ten million dollar bond payments that this city would have to pay the residents of this city, when there could be some economies of scale that could be achieved. And yes, there's a lot of acrimony and I get that and, and, you know, um, I'm probably one of those people who are tired of the fact that they keep developing and not doing S, SDC charges and, you know, all of those kinds of things, but that's what was written into the original contract. And the, maybe the original contract was not a decent enough contract. And we needed to look back at, rather than having a, a contract that is a detriment to the city, which in this case, I think it was, that we look more at, and that's why having a, a sewer district where everybody's in the same bucket, you're not one party against another party. You're all in the same bucket together, trying to come up with a solution.
If I might add, um, remember when the city attorney was here the last time, he said that one of the things is that Leniden could then become simply a customer? Which means we set the rates, we can account for any growth, things like that. So we get to the same place as a district, except that you would do like, for example, what they do in, I know you guys told me some places, but, um, like for example, Albany and Millersburg, you know, they have a joint treatment plan. But then we have also, uh, Pacmas County, the wastewater treatment plant supports cities and they have these agreements with them. So those are, those are the options that would get us in the same place, but the city wouldn't lose control of the wastewater treatment plant.
Guard the green borders.
And why is it important that we maintain control?
I'm just saying, that's really up to the council to decide.
Sure, I get it.
The thought of forming a district like that just is overwhelming.
But the state has resources that can help do that, right?
Yes, I mean, there, we do the special district folks have some assistance there, um. You know, this is Oregon, you know, has, um, money for planning. Again, they're more thinking more towards your wastewater treatment, uh, your facility plan or some, you know, some kind of report for that, um, they can help with that. Uh, Courtney collabors with the, uh, regional solutions team. Again, we're good at, at coordinating and finding resources, they, they don't come, like she doesn't have a checkbook for that. But we can, you know, help with phone calls and, and bring parties together to have these conversations. Um, if that's something that the city is interested. Again, we're here to give you information and, um, and also to understand where you're coming from and what your needs are. Um, so again, that we can, we can help both parties if you will, and if, if you go separate, you go separate. Um, if, if after doing some evaluation, you think, well, okay, maybe we can, you know, maybe it makes sense to stay together to have a regional plant, because that's kind of what you have right now. Um, again, that's up to you and, um, Leniden to kind of, you know, work some stuff out for you to have, if that's what you wanna do.
So, so I just wanted to add, you know, since I was here the last time, you know, the, I, I understand that the city has sent a letter separated from Leniden. And, and I, I'm not here to go one way or the other, I think that's something that you all can discuss. I think fundamentally, um, we talk about that facility plan and what is involved in putting together this facility plan for the city, that that informs you. I, I know about that Eco Northwest, um, plan or whoever did that plan, Mary, Mary, I can't remember the name, but it's not a facility plan. So for me, fundamentally, a facility plan can think about different options, but also it just fundamentally, it's what the city needs to do for itself. Um, to be prepared for when the treatment plant no longer is able to function or starts to experience, you know, it starts small, we see little, we sort of see signals and then it gets worse and then it gets to a point where you can't, this treatment plant can't, can't maintain compliance. And that's with or with less flows too, I mean.
Sure.
It's not necessarily gonna be an automatic, like, okay, less flows, everything's great, right? So fundamentally, with or without the flows, um, this, this city needs a limelight facility plan. And like I said, the only reason why I say the facility, facility plan is, and I use those words, is because that's the mechanism that all funding will go to like, so.
Sure. So I was encouraged that you said it's a transition, that, that they're in a transition period? Because we've obviously terminated.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I guess my question to you from, from the state is, how much time is DEQ going to take to do approvals? And, you know, we're at twenty twenty seven now, so how much of a contract extension are we looking at in order to be able to accommodate what you guys are seeing in their facility study?
So, Mary can speak to, like, because it's not just DEQ's, right? It's a whole bunch of other agencies' permits, so she can speak to that and then I'll, I can speak to what the DEQ permitting process is like. But they all have to go first before we, DEQ gets involved, um, so.
Yes, so, so that's why they went to that special meeting, that mobile building that I talked about, is because that, that has US Fish and Wildlife, Oregon Fish and Wildlife, Parks, because Parks owns the, you know, the beach part. And then you have Hartland State Lands, because they own, you know, sort of the near shore stuff. And then you have NIMs, because we have dangerous species, uh, that use the waterway and whales and all that kind of stuff. So there has to be this really robust analysis that will show that is, it is okay to put a, um, a wastewater, you know, wastewater, treaty wastewater in there, like how far out does it have to be, do they have to have diffusers? You know, just, there's all these questions that, that have to be answered first. So then once they, they know that it could be permissible and doing a new outfall, I don't care where you're putting it, it, it does take a year or so to go through that whole process with all these different agencies. Um, and remember, some agencies have lost staff, so that only makes things take a little longer, because, you know, our federal partners don't have all their employees, right? They got, they got let go. And so, so some of this will be extended out longer. So, you know, for, for these big permits that I'm talking about, it takes one to two years to get them. And then they have to finish the design, which Renee's gonna talk about, and they gotta build it. So, um, yeah, um, I mean, it could take, the only thing it takes usually about five to six years to build a brand new plant. Because they have to start, they're gonna have to change the flows to go up towards the airport, because now they all come down here. They got, we do that, we're piping and.
It's so funding. Where can you get the funding, right? So that's gonna delay, because they're not, no one's, no one's, we don't have anybody giving out fifty five to forty million dollars right now. So, um, interestingly enough, I just read, um, that they gave money, not for the wastewater treatment, but, but USAID money, like, a billion dollars to.
That was for the.
For the fire.
Fire, it's for the fire. No, but I'm saying, when I, when I think about wastewater treatment, um, it, it goes in line with all those things. Somebody's got one, but it's not coming to Oregon. Um, but we don't, we aren't seeing those kinds of grants anymore, so it's gonna be longer.
So we. We gave them notice five years ago. Can you say it takes five to seven years for a new wastewater treatment plant? So actually, we gave them notice three years ago. And so, we gave them a five year notice, they're not gonna fit into five years.
No.
And so what's to keep, well, I've got a couple of questions here, what's to keep them from doing another five years? Um, and then saying, well, we still couldn't get our funding, so we need to extend it again? And then the, the, the next question about that is, um, at what point does DEQ tell us, you don't have a choice, you have to process their sewage?
We don't do that, we're not gonna do that, we.
So where are they gonna process their sewage if we choose not to?
It's gonna be a, it's gonna be a legal issue between you, the city of depot bay, personally, the city of depot bay and the San Antonio district, I mean, there's no way, well, I, I spoke a little bit about this the last time I was here, there's no way to just shut them off. If you shut them off, the city of depot bay shuts them off and they, then you're. If you shut them off, the city of Deep Bay shuts them off and they, then you're liable for causing a, an environmental problem, a public health hazard. Um so the, both of you have to work that part of it out, we're not gonna get involved. We're just gonna cite, cite the city and cite the San Antonio District for having loss sewage discharges. So it, it's a little different than DEQ telling the both of you that you have to divorce, you have to divorce by this amount of time. That this plant has to be built by this amount of time, um that's not, not gonna be our.
Bill, delay. Just called, so is there no compelling mechanism, um like Bill's question about delay? They seem to be moving as snail's place, but they're moving, but um.
No, I don't have a mechanism to enforce your city's order to, to disconnect. That's not my order.
No, no, but in terms of proceeding with this facilities plant with due diligence, is there no mechanism to do that?
Well, they're, I, I would say working with Glen Eden, they're not stalling. They, they are systematically moving forward and we, we have plenty of cities that go at this pace, it's not, it's not. So it's not like they're not trying, it's just, you know, they, and they, you know, they kind of lost probably six months to a year thinking they can go into the airport and they should have had that conversation way earlier, way in, into that sort of, but they didn't, it happens, so what? Now they know, so now they're really focusing on what they need to do for signing up the airport. And so, again, I, I think that they looked at the price tag and they're not, wow, I don't know. And they have reached, we talked to, you know, Commissioner Chuck and, you know, they had reached out saying, hey, can, can Lincoln City help us? Can the state help us? Because they know that they probably can't afford, you know, thirty-five million dollars, forty million dollars, I mean, those rates. I mean, we're seeing some rates topping over a hundred dollars for people. And, and so there is this, the financial piece, um but they're very aware that, yes, you're giving them a termination notice. And we can't judge their speed on how they move, that's not something we get into, but um they are, they are making progress. Um what, 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 when they'll get there, again, we, we can't predict that. I think Renee correctly said, you know, probably the biggest obstacle will be, you know, being able to uh secure the funding um to, to build it. Um I'm pretty sure that, you know, right now, using Civil West, they know how to build plants, they know how to do engineering. So that's not an issue um that way, but it's just, you know, simultaneously doing, you know, engineering and getting your funding going. So that's kind of the phase they're in right now and they had, had meetings with states saying, where can we find money? How can you help us? We have conversations with them, well, we have this planning money, we have this here, we don't have any ticket money.
And they have, they have also met with DEQ to talk about the ultimate sort of permit that allows the wastewater treatment plant to operate and treat wastewater and discharge to the ocean, um so they have had those conversations with us as well and they have a good idea of what our requirements could be.
So um a couple of questions if I may. Um the first question would be, um so there are concerns about where our outfall currently is and how we're handling that in Deep Bay. And so I think that's a, a situation that we as a city need to, to try to figure out. Does that require full relicensing with DEQ to make changes of and give recommendations for changing where the outfall is and how it's, how it's handled?
Same thing, the best study that, that they're committed to and you're gonna be doing a study.
And then the second comment that I would have is, we're at a point now where we need to do something because they're not gonna make it. And so the city's gonna need to enter into a new agreement and me as a counselor, the last agreement was awful. And certainly did not take into account all of the things that we do with our own citizens that they should be responsible for as well. And um I just think that um in order to keep them from extending this, we need to figure out a way to build into that contract an escalating cost factor, so that, you know, this is what it's gonna cost you this year, this is what it's gonna cost you next year. The year after that is this much because at some point, it will become so expensive for them that the best option is for them to build their own. So that would be my thought on it.
Again, DEQ hasn't.
Right, yeah, I, I mean, it wasn't.
Yeah.
I just know we need to build the contract, we have to get legal advice to do that and we certainly end up on a contract like the last one.
Yeah, and for me, it just all goes back to what is, what are the city's plans, right? Because the city needs to know what is costing or are going to be as part of that, then we're all.
But I don't think that is really relevant to whether we keep or don't keep.
Correct.
Uh Glen Eden, I mean, we're gonna have those costs anyway. And so at some point, the city is gonna need to figure out with our eleven hundred citizens or twelve hundred or whatever the number is now, how are we going to fund, the same way we're having to deal with our water treatment plant? How are we as a city going to fund the updates that are gonna be necessary to wastewater? We have to do it for water, so we're, and we're, we know we're gonna have to do it for wastewater. And of course, we're a city that um doesn't have a tax base, so it, it doesn't come out of the taxes that we're getting from property. And so the only place that that money can come from is rates and, and, and our grants and that kind of thing. So um you know, it's, I don't think Glen Eden is, is relevant to us making a decision as a city about our, our water treatment plant because we know we're gonna have to do that anyway. And having Glen Eden or not having Glen.
Wastewater, yeah, this is.
That's right, yeah, sorry. Having, having Glen Eden as part of our wastewater is probably, it's a, it's a moot point either way. Because we know we're gonna have to do some work on, on wastewater, so um it's just with Glen Eden, it's a lot more work.
But you also, like we mentioned before, you, you, and again, that's where you need to do the finances and that's where facilities have to help, you know. So how does that spread out? And, and again, when you do a facility plan, you can, the engineer can be more neutral, not necessarily just sort of, well, this is the cost and then, then, then that inform the discussions or clear the form of discussions about, you know, yep, we made the right decision and we're gonna pursue whatever millions of dollars that are leaving to be upgraded, you know. And you can do things in phases, we've had communities where they, they've broken down their upgrades in, in phase one, two, three, and four. And they just, you know, start at one and, and get money for that, you know, when they're ready to, they're gonna save more money, raise rates, and move to the next phase. And so there's things like that you can do, um depending on what your upgrades are.
Sure.
I hear it does a facility plan, does our current engineer do that or?
Usually you, I mean, they may, I, usually the city hires a consultant to do a facility, I don't know if an engineer.
He's looking into it, he has to look into it, it's just wasn't a high priority decision, it's something to look into.
The, oh absolutely, yeah, I saw it.
Usually they're, they're um wastewater engineers. They, they actually, um, you know, they actually specialize in wastewater engineering. So it's not a city engineer, because a city engineer has got a bigger picture.
Right, we have a, we have a firm, APS Engineering, they have a wide range of engineers, but I don't know that we have, that's.
That they have that specific.
Right.
Right, but you know, there's like, and again, we're not endorsing the Civil West, Dyer.
I don't wanna hear Civil West, yeah.
Tech for tech, like, I mean, there's just, there's quite a few.
I'm just Civil West is already working with Glen Eden.
Oh, that's true too.
Right, so you, you know, you may not want that because it might seem like a contradiction, but there, there's plenty of other firms. You can do, you know, request proposal and get, get some rate, you know, and whatnot. Now, um we, we had talked to the mayor about, you know, so DEQ has, you know, some money for planning. It is a loan, so you would have to sign loan papers and I understand that you have why laws or codes that would have to be changed. But we are offering a hundred thousand dollars principal forgiveness. So if you take more than a hundred thousand, then, you know, there's interest rates, you're gonna have to pay back, but you could get up to a hundred thousand. Which, and then it, this is Oregon also contributes, um because they have funding funds. That may be enough for you to hire a consultant to, to do a facility plan. Or if you have money to reserve, you could also just do it out of your own coffers, which is what Glen Eden has been doing with their facility plan.
Another question, will you um go forward with these plans? Now, do you have a team that develops the requirements for water, wastewater discharge and, and harnessing tools and all the other things along?
For wastewater, yes.
Right, okay, do they actually understand the economics of their mandates that they force on the cities? To small communities like this with limited resources, do they ever focus on how this impact will financially subdue these communities?
They, they do have a process built in, um it's part of federal regulation that we can't allow um permittees to, to like, almost like what Mary is saying, move kind of along a, a schedule, a compliance schedule, so compliance within, under that isn't required immediately. It could be required for whatever, however many years, um the permit can basically ju, hasn't justified why it's.
But my point is, can the state and the government and the governor allocate specific funds to help these communities out such as ours?
Well, that's where you would work with your, like in this case, Representative Gomberg and Senator Anderson. So it could happen legislatively, DEQ has to enforce the Clean Water Act. You know, that's, that's where this, a lot of these laws are coming from the federal government. So um yes, the state could decide to take some of their, just making this up, you know, their rainy day fund and say, okay, we have you know, twenty communities that need major upgrades and we're gonna provide grants to them or to a certain amount. Sure, they could do that, they haven't decided to do that. Um we do have on, uh, you know, for clean water, if you're on a loan plan for DEQ, we, we do need some money from the feds. I don't know if we're gonna keep getting more money, but we did in the past. And then uh Oregon Health Authority has the drinking waters, so that may be, you know, a fund that you're gonna tap into as well. But they only need once a year to have projects come in and decide which ones are the fund. We need uh four times a year, which times a year? April, August, and December. So we, we, we take applications three times a year and, and for then, work them through the process. Now, if you go into our process, you do not have to sign a loan, but if you don't start the process, you, you can't get a loan.
But then you can kick the ball continuously and say, I'm, I'm doing more research.
You can, you can, you can stay three years on our plan.
So there, but there's a three-year end game and then what, you mandate them rubber stamp them or you?
No, no, they, they even, then they reapply um to the program, so.
Okay.
That's for funding, that's different than permitting, that's a whole other.
But I, I think there's gotta be some kind of accountability that the state is making everyone understand that we've gotta comply. We don't have the resources, that's our fault, that's why we're talking, we know we can do it, but we don't have the funds to do it. But you add the infrastructure along the whole coastal range and everyone's in the same boat, so there's gotta be someone that recognizes this and says, hey, maybe we need to.
I think, I think your best bet frankly is to talk to your legislators, I mean, that's why, you know, working with Gomberg about three million dollars for a list. And that took them several funding cycles to get that money, uh they're really just gonna get four million. So again, that's just one community.
That's how we got our docs, or partly our docs was from the legislature rainy day fund.
Yeah, so again, I, we, you know, DEQ, you know, can't, you know, we don't lobby, yeah, we don't lobby, so. But I, I'm, being in this RST role, you are not the only person that talks about, we call those unfunded mandates. You know, in Washington, sometimes when they have unfunded mandates, they have seed money to get people going. And Oregon just hasn't never chosen to do that. Whether it's with DEQ's regulations or somebody else's regulations, they rarely, you just, that's just a decision to make not to provide extra money for cities to comply with these rules. So it, it's, it's unfortunate, but that's our state. So if you don't like it, sounds like it's, it's a burden, I get it, and the best avenue is, is have this conversation.
Well, we're trying to come up with a, a realistic solution. And we're all on the same team.
Yep.
And so that's the bottom line is how do we fix it, right? And you were throwing us in the water, it's our ankles and our, our hands tied together and we've got no way to go. I mean, if someone has to wake up and say, hey, this is not right, we've gotta work together to fix this.
Yeah, I mean, you know, personally, I was hoping with the governor's um housing initiative that, that there would actually be conversation about wastewater. And a little bit more about infrastructure, meaning drinking, drinking water. Um now, because there is pressure on a lot of communities to grow without, they don't have the, the, the proper infrastructure. They're polluting right now, at least city of Deep Bay is in violation of the permit. I have cities that are in violation of the permit and have been in violation for many, many years.
And so what, what happens then, they're in violation of?
They're in violation and it's one of those things where we tried to, to keep extending compliance schedules, trying to make small progress where we can, um so for example, a city in the, in the valley that shall not be named um out of compliance since the nineties. And um we, we, we were really very patient with that and looked at small little things until the Environmental Protection Agency started to ask us about them. And asking, why are they in violation so often, um that they are the number thirteen on the list of violators in the nation. So we basically shared with the city that, you know, we were not going to be able to delay things any longer and we were going to need to basically demonstrate to EPA that we were making progress and we were going to do what we did the last twenty years. Um so it did definitely um kind of sway the city into doing things that they were not adequately funding and by adequately funding, I just mean, you know, they, they were, monies were going to other things that were needed, they just weren't going to the sewer system. Because I think sewer is really flesh to put and it's on, it's just not very sexy, you know, is what I say about it. Um so it, they, they weren't putting money into their infrastructure, their collection system. So there were places where their collection system is just falling apart. So they really had to refocus and do a lot of work on their collection system, which is not, they, they need better treatment to, to meet their permits, because their permit has got a lot more stringent. Um but um that work on that collection system and making it tighter will really help them avoid some of the, you know, peaks they would have in flows which would kind of wash out their, their wastewater and wash out the salt. So here, one of the things I think that um, that the city of Deep Bay is lucky to have is that ocean outfall, you know. Um it might not be in the best place, but it does um, it does afford usually for more pollution, you know. And so you get a little bit more mixing and better mixing and the city is still small enough, right? What's your flow rate, you're under?
Dry. It's, huh? Dry flows, dry flows, if you will, yeah, I mean, what?
Dry is like summertime.
Twenty-five to.
Yeah, so you're, you're considered a minor.
Yeah, yeah, we are a minor, yeah.
Yeah, you're a minor and is a, in.
But we see enough to a million, I mean, or heavier.
Yeah, 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 you're not the only one.
But I've seen communities inject the, the pudding into the ground, you know, they remediate groundwater again.
Again, there's people, I mean, a- again, again, there's regulations for that, but yes, people can treat their wastewater and then, and then discharge to the ground.
Our focal point is the funding, let's focus on the real, how do we fix it? We fix it by getting it funded and no one's offered a solution to our problem.
Well, no, there are some loans she's saying, we just have to apply, well, first we have.
We have to change our charter and then we have to apply for the funds.
Yeah, and.
And we did, you know, we did budget money for studies too.
Yeah, and just like you can, you know, um in the, you know, the sixties, seventies, eighties, the federal government did build plants. That's how, we talked about powers, that was built by the federal government, powers still didn't make that. And so that program is morphed into what we have today and so really USDA, World Development, DEQ, we don't have grants that, 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 you know, people get their full wastewater treatment plant. The idea was they came in originally, they built them and then people were supposed to save money and then upgrade over time. And you didn't, you didn't do that generally, this is just cities in general, because you know, you have other things, you're fixing sidewalks, you're, you're building schools, you're.
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure, right, and so it just got kicked down the road, you know. And then now, now it's the point where, okay, there's not free money, the state's not putting in free money. I mean, you're needing money here, too many here, okay, that's nice, but it doesn't really do everything that needs to happen, so you've got a very good, good point here. Renee and I just don't have a solution, you know.
Right, and I mean, technically, I mean, this is, you know, we're all here for the same.
We give each other.
Yeah.
Mary, why can't you find me money? Please stop making those regulations more stringent.
You just can't get water from a rock, I mean, that's, that's the whole point.
And your blood.
Exactly, and, and so we keep kicking the can further and further and further and further and further down the road. And I heard you say earlier, you, you don't enforce a shut-off, I mean, obviously, we couldn't do that. And I heard you say earlier, you you don't enforce a shut-off, I mean, obviously, we couldn't do that because, you know, EPA would be involved and we'd be cited. And again, if you're citing us, so what, we don't have the money to pay you anyway, so, you know, it's it's like, um at some point, something has to get. And um I'm all for looking at economies of scale and figuring out if there's ways we can save money by making the project. A bigger project as opposed to a smaller project and sharing the problem amongst three thousand people instead of a thousand people. That's that's all I'm saying.
Okay, so these ladies need to hit the road at six o'clock.
Thank you for coming.
So yes, personally, this is a.
Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Or if any, if you need us to come back again, I mean, I I think, are there any other burning questions before we wrap up?
Okay.
Or we really try to.
If we do, we'll email them to you and we can uh get answers as we need them, so.
Yep. Yeah, and you know, Courtney can come down here and make sure we apologize that he was at the knee, I said, if you can come and we can just have the conversation, answer the questions.
Yeah. We gotta keep keep going, gotta keep talking, I appreciate it so much that you were able to come to the city, it's a huge help.
Yeah, very important, definitely.
We'll come in time, um we'll also come to the public room soon.
Oh, okay.
If you're not doing the city council meeting and you wanna, you know, point at Renee and say it's her fault.
It's okay, it's a long time, it's, you know, it's what I do, so.
I think this work session was very helpful because um we're the top audience leader.
Yeah.
And get the information that we need to go forward.
And and we do think letting the public know, like, like, hey, we do have, whether it's water, wastewater, and I'm just speaking from RST and infrastructure. You know, i- you know, if you look at Amstel, you know, they um they need quite a bit of money to upgrade their plant. And so they did like infocommer, oh really, they did, they did infocommer, cause if you go on their website and you take the info, you'll see the infocommer.
Yeah.
And they go fun and they just kept the 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 concept in front of people, so that when they needed to go out and raid race, people would say, oh yeah, I want my clean water, yeah, they showed me. But just, I mean, maybe I also, you know, actually.
Yeah, good, just like, good to hear, is is so important.
Yeah, I. Grapple with whatever infrastructure, you know, letting people know, you could even have stuff where, you know, I know like Cringle Creek, uh the residents wanted to fix that creek. And so they got this little plaque that said, I did my part, you know, and so they would donate money and that helped clean up the creek.
Oh.
So there's just all these different kinds of things that, you know, getting a fixed effort, but you have a lot of touristy people here. So maybe, you know, there could be some way that you can get them to to make money.
Uh I think the city of Ashland calls that a a vying tax.
Vying tax, yeah, they do a vying tax.
No, that won't go here.
Well, it doesn't go to lottery, cause we we were surprised at it that it went in there, but actually, we have a a special, a special tax, like, yep, that wastewater is to fund their.
Yeah.
We don't have any taxes in Depot Bay, we have user fees, so.
User fees.
I'm sure it's the city of Ashland probably causing that too, probably misspoke. You just kinda see it at the bottom and it looks like a tax.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Exactly.
Thank you.
All righty.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Safe driving back.
Oh, yeah.
The weather's great, so.
I know.
It's nice, but it was nice, it's kinda hot in the valley.
Yeah, so. And for the record, Mary said Powers, but that is not the city I was talking about, there's more, there's there's a different city I was thinking about.
Powers is a cool city to drive into.
It's such a tiny, tiny city.
It is, seventeen miles in and all the way in.
But they did have their wastewater treatment built for them.
Yeah.
Powers wastewater treatment system was built in um nineteen sixty-two.
Oh.
And it's holding together, but um we think it was some sort of mystery concrete, you know, you talk about chemicals and things that people use. That back then they were using, but they've been out of compliance for a long time too, so she's she's she was bringing up the the out of compliance issue. But the one I was speaking of, which is thirteen worst in the country, was a different, a different city, so.
I'm sure the AIs are gonna be able to tell us who it is.
Is it, do you think? Oh, yeah.
I will have to do is go on the internet, open up an AI and say, who's been out of compliance for?
And you know. Yeah, who's been out of compliance for long? It's one of the things that's really nice though, that that, you know, the the city council is is very, I think it divide from from you all and very supportive of the environment. You know, and recognizing how much the environment plays into their livelihoods. You know, they they don't want to throw kaka into the river that they all fish in and swim in and everything, you know, similar for for Depot Bay and the whales and the ocean, so.
Yeah, our resident whales.
Yeah, totally, so, yeah, um very, very, very um very, it's very um um heartening to have councils that are. Um aware, you know, of of.
And it's encouraging that we have as a system as old as we are and we're not in, we're not out of compliance.
Yeah.
We're not out of compliance, yeah, you know, you guys are doing a good job.
We're all standard workers.
Yeah, you guys work hard, yeah, yeah, good job.
Thank you.
Well, which way are we going? Uh you guys parked out front, so you might go that way, yeah.
Thanks, Mary, thank you.
All right, good to see you all.
Good to see you.
So we're really, um I think moving forward, we need to get this um facility plans to be going right away. And we've got the funds to do it that that we can?
I don't know, we didn't actually budget it, so we'll have to wait till here back from our city engineers to what that's going to look like.
And who's going, you you know, what that's gonna look like, you know?
He'll at least give me a ballpark, so if we need to outperform our people, then what we need to do.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, it seems like a step backwards in a way, but I I'm thinking about what uh Bill was proposing, like the the sewer district. And it would share the cost and that that worked effectively for a long time. It's just that with them growing and us growing, our current situation isn't going to work much longer, you know? But before we do spend money on studies, could we reconsider?
Reconsider, we still need to do this study, we still need to.
Doing this, this? Either way?
Absolutely.
Yeah, you have to keep going here, you have to understand what we've got, the two separate, they have theirs, we have ours, they're connected.
Does it? Okay.
We've gotta focus on our area at first.
Oh, and I really like the idea of treating them as a customer, so we could ratchet up costs, you know?
Because part of our sharing, I mean, it is our district, we are sharing.
Yeah, it's and they're sixty percent, they're sixty, we're about forty.
Oh, except that they're.
And for many years, as long as I've been in the city for almost thirty-five years, it's been, if we pay the land share, we want to have all the same.
But they.
And then, but that's, I know, but that that's why we're at where we're at now, because of that attitude.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they have, they don't pay anything to reserves for us, and.
No, I agree, yeah, the contract was awful.
And that's. It was awful.
And it was an awful contract, but I I think that the important part about this is the animosity is because.
Yeah.
We have two different groups that want totally different things.
Mm-hmm.
Where if we could agree to either them becoming a customer, which I think is gonna be a long shot to to get them to agree to do that. I mean, maybe the, maybe in, not saying in the interim, that's true, but when we look long-term and and this problem may be a five, maybe a five-year contract, maybe a seven-year contract, or maybe a ten-year contract.
They have to agree, that's a choice.
Whatever that is, at some point, that contract is going to end and we and Depot Bay are gonna have a wastewater treatment problem. And they, Lenny, are gonna have a wastewater treatment problem, and so the idea of pulling everybody together.
We've got, so we might as well.
And figuring out a way to work as one cohesive group instead of the animosity between us and them. Um it and I and I get it, there, you know, we've we've gone years and years and years and years and years this way. And the trench has gotten deeper and deeper and deeper and being able to cross, to build a bridge across the trench is gonna be a, it's gonna be a a big effort. But I I just don't see the city, I mean, we can't build, we can't spend five million dollars on a water treatment plant. Coming up with another five million dollars plus or whatever it's gonna be for for wastewater, it it's just more than the people of people they are gonna be able to handle. I just, I don't know the best way to do that.
I think one thing we do need to think about, we just had to order another wastewater pump, what was that, they've gone up to almost a hundred grand now?
Say yeah.
Their pumps are.
So for one pump and for us, we don't have that kind of money by ourselves, right?
So they paid sixty thousand dollars for that pump, yes, we paid forty thousand, so.
Yes.
Well, it's it's fifty-eight, um just the second one, it's fifty-eight.
It's well, rammed it up.
But yeah, but you know, that's a lot of money, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, their budget for what they have to pay this year is more than us, like, like I said, fifty-eight percent of our one point six ninety-eight billion.
Right. And we as a city have some of the highest rates on the coast for for water um and sewer. I mean, we're paying substantial and and of course, we're increasing that now every year um at a rate.
We did, but we went for a lot of years where we were the be lowest.
No, no, for sure, that is, that is true, but we're we're getting up there now where everybody else isn't.
Now. Yeah.
And that at some point, we're gonna get to a breaking point with the citizens.
So we don't, no, no, we're we're low compared to people.
Well, look at Walport, I think the.
Yeah, seventy-three for sewer, uh Depot Bay proposed rate in this was twenty-one, now it's in place, forty-two dollars. Cannon Beach, forty-five, Depot Bay existing is thirty-six fifty and Garibaldi is fifty, and Glenaven Beach is a lot, under ten. So, no, we are low, we are near the end and water, we're existing is fifty, proposed at the time was fifty-three fifty-one. Walport is fifty-four fifty.
And we've got three increases since.
Yeah, but you know, it's still, it's lower than the others.
Anyway, the point, I guess my point is, is that I just think it's it we, it's water and a bridge. We've got animosity there, we need to figure out how to build the bridges and.
But do we know if they want to serve us?
Well, that's that's the whole point, you know, we.
So that's when we, do we want to sit down with Lenny in the next few months and?
I I think we should before either city spends more money.
But I really don't want any more wastewater going into our ocean than we have to, I mean, to me, that's sort of the bottom line.
Yeah, but they're not so far above us.
Yeah, they are, it's a whole different ecosystem, we have some, you know, um intermittent littles cells, it kinda breaks up current and stuff, yeah, it's. Me, our our ocean here is quite different than where Wallace Street is, that's a sandy beach area and the shelter off, I mean, there's whole difference.
That's.
And these studies will show that.
We've got to move forward.
Okay.
So what's the consensus here, do we want to research a sewer district?
I think we should, I don't think we can call ourselves thorough, we don't.
I don't understand what the purpose of the sewer district is, we already have.
So it would be where it's at now, it could only grow so much, cause there's only room for one little expansion, don't we?
Yeah, I think that just sounds like a lot of work.
It does.
I I do not support that, well, having good.
It is, it would be, the cost would be up here where if you go in in both would be three hours.
No, I don't think, I don't think there's any costs to it.
Yeah.
So is the cost to rebuild what's going on over there in the trench, in the plant today? Cause the tanks are gonna need to be rebuilt, we've already spent money on catwalks and all of that kind of stuff, but.
So we're. Well. So you you, we can expand uh another donut meeting area or the type, so the the plant is, it just needs to be, uh just modernized a little bit. Where our problem is, where the elephant in the room is our collection system is too small. And to keep treating their sewer, we have to double the size of our collection system, which Depot Bay is solid rock. So you have to either do tunnel boring in solid rock to put, you know, four-foot round pipes in, right now they're fifteen-inch, they need to be doubled or more. To continue to carry their sewer for the next fifteen years, say, um that would be, um so for example. At Bay Street and one-on-one, where the our sewer comes down Bay Street in nineties um at Bay and goes down over the hill where the new sidewalk is and all the way to the harbor. Through the docks, it goes to the park where the pump station is. That would have to be increased, not, right now, from Bay Street, the sewer needs about twenty feet at that intersection. It's about twenty-seven to thirty-two feet at the barn house, we don't know where the barn house is, or that's fall through there. That's solid rock, they used dynamite nineteen seventy-three to get through there. So just consider taking that and making, putting a four-foot around, say, concrete lining with antholes. Um thirty-two feet in the ground in solid rock, you'd have to have a tunnel boring machine, it would cost a hundred million dollars to go.
We don't need to do that, that even goes away.
No, that's just like we say, make the district can do all this stuff, just.
I recommend that we really study, get this study done, so that we have an idea of where we are, what we need.
Yeah.
Yes, we're keeping them or no, we're not keeping, is that why?
Well, I think we've already decided we're not keeping.
Yeah, I know, I know.
What we need to do now is figure out what we're gonna do with this contract, because that's the most, that's the most important piece. Having the facility study absolutely is gonna be important, because we have in the budget for this year, the rate study for our water and sewer rates.
Mm-hmm. Right.
And right now, based on where the rates are, we are collecting dollars that we're supposed to be funding capital projects. And I don't know if we're spending that money on capital projects at the rate that we're collecting the money, that's, I mean, I'll offer for future discussion. But that money is in our budget to do that rate study. And so maybe it makes sense to do a facility study in conjunction with the rate study to determine, you know, where do, where do we need to be with our wastewater plant? Five years from now, ten years from now, fifteen years from now. And do it with the flows of Depot Bay by itself and the flows with Depot Bay and Lenny did, and what would it take in order to be able to do that?
Right, and and our engineer has talked about doing a flow study, but not, it's not in this year's budget, but he's talked about it and I I believe it's worth having Kim contacting John at AKS and asking him.
Well, if.
But that would all entail, and and they were talking about civil west and and dire, our firm is way bigger than than most of them.
They're good, they're good, I, yeah.
So should we start working on a contract?
I would support going up for it.
So when is our existing contract in twenty twenty-seven?
Twenty twenty-seven.
I I don't think she means a contract with an engineer, I think she means a contract with a real estate service.
With rent service.
Yeah, with that, yeah, and the incremental, so you said, it's a right idea.
Oh, like, we can write that in place in twenty twenty-seven, so, I mean, we can start working on, but that's not, I mean, we need one.
I would love, but the facility plan is probably, cause the contract would have to reflect our needs.
Have they asked for an updated contract?
Yeah, agreed.
What are they, where, what's, where are they at?
No.
I don't know, we don't know, we haven't, we haven't talked with them.
We haven't, we haven't.
I think we don't have enough information of that, so we're still.
I want more tonight than I've been told in.
I would, I think we need.
Yeah.
Five years.
Okay, we start, that's our high action.
Step one, yeah, is the.
Okay.
Well, like, yeah, we need is the same, this last thing on our agenda about then, need a charter, then we can get stuff out, you know, you know?
Yeah.
And um.
But that's about the people.
We don't have budget for a facility plan, so we're we're gonna need to figure out where we're gonna be.
We have a lot of contingency funds, I've got the most contingency, but.
Yeah, we have lots of contingency, but, yeah. We we can make a.
We have, we have a limit this fiscal year, we might have a whole boatload of money, we're waiting to spend. Do you get that, Gary?
Okay, so let's move on then to the um, the, we've got a an energy grant that um we we're need to discuss if we should apply for that. And it has to be done by August, August fifteenth, and.
We stay here.
We had.
That was fine, work, Joe, and your company here, unbelievable.
Thank you.
Yeah, so do we want, the question is, yes or no, do we wanna go ahead with the grant?
We can't make a decision, you can raise your consensus.
Yeah, raise your consensus.
And then make a decision.
Well, I would never wanna turn up free money, that that would be a silly thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we should leave or it was really um well done. One, one question I have, yes, and I would want to move forward with this, it's just a huge matter of. I don't think that I don't think was addressed, but I didn't read it publicly as carefully as I should, was um where the hydrogen tanks get stored. What I understand is hydrogen is such a small molecule, you know, it's really hard to contain, you know, there's pressure tanks that contain them, but what happens in an earthquake? Where should we put them or how should we handle them, so they're not, was that addressed though, I know, I know there was something about resilience and resources planning?
Right, am I allowed to talk about this?
Yes.
Okay, all right, good.
You've got their information.
These units, you, these units are are self-sustaining, right? They're gonna put in a bleed valve so they can, they're gonna put in a bleed valve so they make their own hydrogen.
Oh, I'm sorry, what, what?
The hydrogen seal isn't a tank, it's five thousand PSI, it's there for energy resilience, it's only there for backup, it's not primary source. It is a tank, much like a propane tank, just comparatively, it doesn't leak, doesn't grip any groove, there's no problem with storage. It's gonna be adjacent to the facility, the small box on the four-by-four footprint with valuarts along it. So, okay, somebody crashed into it and and it's gonna be on its own, like, it's like similar to a standby generator, it looks like a big refrigerator.
I I saw it at your, that one example.
With the tank, that's it, storage-wise, that's the only tank that's gonna be there, is that tank or those tank.
But I I was, maybe I mistaken, but I saw that you had multiple tanks and especially if you wanted to store more for other facilities.
Right, as as we grow with an electrolyzer, having electrolyzer and going to prime power or adding more systems. or adding more systems, that would be addressed then, right, that would be in another separate area that we'll go with, but that's not part of this initial grant, and this is strictly for this building and the community center. Is what we're asking for, those first two, for the construction of those two emergency facilities for energy resilience with an onsite system with their own individual tanks, just for them, that's it. That's where they're gonna be stored, right there, so.
And in an earthquake, what happens?
And in an earthquake, that's all part of the, the request, that the earthquake group or that they're gonna be in, involved. They've been tested, the company's out of Boulder, Colorado, we'll get the specific information to share. But that's a great question, and we'll make that, that knowledge.
Well, yeah, and I don't have, I don't know if this has been submitted yet, but.
I understand.
No, it hasn't, we, we have to approve it first.
Yeah.
We have to approve it, so that, I, it was, uh, at least with my thinking about, you know, where we are, it might be good to address it, please.
No, that's a great point. If, who maintains these things, uh, that's for.
Staff would like to discuss this before the council reaches any kind of consensus. Um, I, I'll start, I'd like to say that I just wanna make sure you guys know that there, right outside of here, will be a twenty by ten foot container. So it's not just a small box, it's a container with solar arrays, panels and everything like that. It's gonna be put behind the parking lot, we, the, the guys thought that, so they're gonna be tearing down, we're gonna be probably cutting trees and things like that, I just want you to realize the footprint of what this system is gonna be. Um, I don't know if that was clear in the plan, but I have, I have it explained to me and I need you, I just wanna make sure you realize, screening or not, we're gonna have a big container out there. Um, the guys want to also address it, because they have some concerns about maintenance, upkeep, storage. Talked about the storage, um, if we make a lot of hydrogen, where are we gonna put it? What do we do with it, let's say if we end up with more hydrogen than we have room for, what do we do then? We don't wanna get in the business, the city staff does not wanna get in the business of selling hydrogen.
Right, let's make a, let's make a list, all your questions, and then we'll get Dr. Persky involved. He'll answer those specifically from a scientific point of view, okay, make a list of all your.
I'm not sure about, pardon me, um, counselor, I'm not sure about it being a scientific point of view or a practical point of view.
Well, that's all part of it, those questions are answered by the, the experts, go to, go to speak. Right, so there's no, uh, you know, there's something, there's some questions that everyone has, let's get them out, we'll get them on the phone, communicate, no problem. Answer all those questions.
Well, they do have questions, I don't know enough about it, I just wanna make sure the council understands the footprint of what we're looking at there.
It's understanding, who's, who's gonna make, maintain it, how are they gonna do it, right?
Yeah, that's what they don't know.
How are we gonna deal with the fuel, who's gonna be trained all, that's all part of the question system that's gonna be in the, in the request for the, for the energy grant.
The guys are concerned, if I can envision pretty little bit about the volume of what it's going to take for them to do it.
Oh, yeah, and, and that's, that's, I can answer, I can answer. Yeah, right.
To manage it, to maintain it, we, remember, we're a short staff, and I don't know the volume will be.
Right.
So, these are just things, it sounds great, but there's a practical aspect and a maintenance aspect, we need the council to understand. Somebody's gonna have to keep it up.
Right, and that's, that's all good, that's all, let's write all the questions down and we'll get them on the phone and bring them in or he's available to communicate. Try to, or any questions that you have on any level or anything. You know, this isn't anything that's not totally out there, understand, because this is cutting edge stuff, we are the only ones in the country that's gonna have standby hydrogen system.
I mean, I want you to understand that I support that, but I have to look from the city standpoint, the staff standpoint, what is going to take for us once the initial cost is done, to maintain it, what it's gonna look like for our guys to maintain it.
Right. That's right.
None of that's ever been discussed, it's a great system,
Yeah.
but if you decide to move forward, which we can, because there's nothing, there's nothing hurting applying for the grant. And they need to get started sooner rather than later, because there's a lot of material that needs to happen. And Courtney, I'll have to bring some to you guys to do approval too. But the reality is, we have concerns about what's gonna happen once we get this lovely new system here and the workload is gonna put on city staff.
There, there was a section of the brand about, um, applicants demonstrating how the project will be maintained, on page fifty-eight, operated and staffed, and we're gonna do it for at least five years, so that should be pretty transparent.
Right. Right.
I knew I read it somewhere, just couldn't read, couldn't find it.
Yes, oh yeah, that checklist is pretty, that checklist is very detailed.
Yeah, it was pretty bad, yeah.
And it's, you know, it's, it's got a budget impact every year, so you just, you know what that is.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
Yeah, and I'm assuming that obviously, since they have to address that, it'll be something that we'll, we'll find out about, you know, what's happening. But that's something we could maybe budget for, I mean, it's nothing that's gonna happen this year.
Oh, no, 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 I agree, I agree, like I said, there's nothing hurt, I mean, for us to apply for, but
Agreed. Yeah.
you just, I need you to understand, the staff does have some concerns, and I do have concern, and what appearance wise, we have a big old
Yeah. We need to take care of.
container out there, but it's better now that they're gonna locate it back of the parking lot, because otherwise they're gonna locate it on the parking lot. And build some kind of a platform with solar arrays that we can park under. So, but at least they're going to, they are gonna have to clear that spot, everybody needs to realize that, so they're probably gonna have to cut some trees. Make sure you all realize that.
You might have liked covered parking when the downpouring rain happens.
Oh, I'm not going in a council myself, I love the rain, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, to have hope, to have solar on top of something, you cover part of me, it seems like, you know, you don't want a container sitting out there, but if it's like a parking structure, it seems.
I actually asked my staff, none of us want, we don't mean, we don't, none of us want one, it's like, mostly it was the look.
So you'd rather have a container?
I don't want, it would have still been a container, it would have just been up.
Oh, yeah.
So, okay, no, the staff is, the point is, they are out there either, but it's the council's decision, so.
So is the, is, I'm just a question about the rate, is it in the, is it in the container storage?
On the top, on the top of the container, it's gonna be like a parking right.
And what's in the container?
It's gonna be the hydrogen fuel cell itself and the tanks, and the hydrogen tank will be inside the container.
Okay, so, and then, is that where the batteries are too, is it?
Yeah, that was in the drawing.
There's no batteries.
So the cell.
There's only one little battery that charges at the base of the fuel cell itself.
Okay.
Not a perception of real battery, it's not. Primarily, the, the wind and the solar system is there for backup, when there's no power, do you keep that system charged?
Keep the generator charged.
Right, if we lose, it's, the goal is a thirty-day charge. So if we lose power, that will be able to self-sustain and generate its own electricity, self-root, continuously, what's the right word, self-sustained. So that's the plan, because, uh, the, if, the inevitable happens, that system will go maintain the town.
So the generator is only gonna afford by floor space, but the container where the array is.
Fuel cell, it's not, you use the restroom, it's a fuel cell, not a generator, a generator is electricity. It's a fuel cell, looks like a little.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, not that they've seen.
All these questions are what we need to get everybody on the same page, and we'll answer, Dr. Persky will talk to us. Whatever you wanna do, however you wanna communicate, well, he's all there. And so are the guys in the North Dakota.
Yeah, so you, you, you need consensus on whether we should proceed with the grant, right, is that what?
Right, so, I have a awful long question, are we, is it zoned for that?
Oh, we'll have to go through planning, I don't know what that's gonna look like yet.
Okay.
It's emergency, uh, electrical system, so it's similar to a standby system. So it's an emergency for a, a capital improvement, command center. You know, this is gonna be the heart of everything, right now, if anything happens to this building here and our shelter. And there's a lot of folks that wanna get more and more involved in those, as things come. Uh, it's, we're gonna crawl forward, walk, and we'll iron out all the, all the questions that there are, everybody will be answering their questions, and if there's any negatives, then we'll work through it. You know, and that's what we're here for, this is, uh, to help us survive. And this is the system we can find twenty-four seven that's gonna do that.
So our next step, is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
This would be to apply for the grant, so, I think applying for the grant is okay?
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is the construction side of the grant, it's a two-phase grant, first phase was ninety-five thousand, second phase is up to a million.
Yeah.
So that, I, I believe that number is fairly able to do systems, uh, to facilitate that, then, grant number two will be for the water wastewater plant, that's coming next. Uh, the state of Oregon has thirteen million dollars from Oregon Department of Energy that's been allocated for that system. Once you're in the loop and have a grant given, chances are you might have a good chance to get a second one. Our goal is to have all of our major facilities with emergency hydrogen fuel-powered systems. Non-fossil fuel, hundred percent green, no heat signature, no noise, no negative environment impact, that's, that's the goal.
Is the grant gonna cover the cost of the initial construction?
That's all, that's all part, yes, that's all part of the grant.
That'll cover the cost of putting the system in entirely, there won't be any.
Yes, it'll cover it, the city won't put a nickel into this. You know, and what we're want, what we're wanting to do, long-term, is to get a school in here, we can train people. All these other communities that wanna see what we're doing, they're gonna come here, so that's gonna boost our tourism. And we're gonna have seminars off-peak hours, like, November, December, January, February, we'll have schools here. You know, we wanna get health ports in here with air taxis, where we can bring and extract people and have some air power in here. We wanna get communication cells going, systems, we wanna get, all these things are all gonna be green energy powered supply. All of our water and wastewater plants will be run, um, and eventually, as electricity costs go up, we'll probably go to full-time hydrogen generation. I mean, that's, that's on the board, that's coming with the things in the future, but that's long-term. We just wanna get this one off the ground and everyone happy right now.
Prove the concept works.
Yes.
One final question, why, um, is, why does it only require a system to operate for five years?
I'm sorry, oh, why is the fives? Uh, that's the electronic side, I don't know specifically, we can find out in the.
Yeah, that would be good for the question.
Yeah, that's in the contract, I saw that too.
Yeah.
That's a good question. That's all part of it.
So if we're all in concurrence, then this would be on your, uh, meeting, uh, next week to approve.
So next week, we want all these questions outlined?
I won't have these questions outlined.
No, no, it doesn't need to be done before you apply for the grant, but. No, um, uh, pardon me, counselor, I'm trying, sorry if I'm speaking over you, um, the, what I need to do and I don't, will not have it ready for the next meeting, is the, the approval, whatever the format takes. What I would do, since there's council concurrence that you do wanna apply for the grant, is let the consultant actin' know that they do, so they can get started. Um, that's kind of why we budgeted that twenty-five thousand in there, so that they would have some seed money, so that they can get going on that. Um, because there is a very, they have a lot of work to do in a short timeframe, so we wanted to get them started sooner, if they were gonna have to do all this work.
And this is not gonna put more work on your plate?
We don't know. They're gonna need data, I don't know how much they're gonna need.
Probably just draw a record. Okay, and so the final issue is, um, talking about the, amending our charter to allowing, uh, allowing to get a hundred thousand dollar loan when we need it, and that would be so helpful. And, um, so I was hoping to get everybody's feeling about how we would, uh, promote that.
So how did we build systems in the past, we were able to issue bonds, right?
Right, we took a vote.
So the, the city voted to issue the bonds?
No, residents, citizens.
That's what I mean.
Everything's put it on the ballot, yeah, yeah.
So we have the large, the storage bank is the last.
But bonds, residents pay for. You can get a loan with a debt forgive, principal forgiveness, that doesn't, and, and that doesn't hurt the residents, doesn't make us pay for.
Right.
And this is really, if you guys wanna move forward with it, I outlined the process. This ballot, uh, sample would actually need to go to our, uh, city, or, have an attorney review. Um, because they actually have to write the ballot title. And then just to make sure, once this happens, once it's ready and everything's been submitted, then it's all on your shoulders to promote it. Um, city staff can't be involved in, in that, we can help gather information and stuff like that for you, but we can't actually sell.
Can't do the PR.
We can't do the PR, you know.
So, the concern that I had was the red text on page seventy, which basically says that, uh, you know, that we can go into debt up to whatever state law requires. We're a tiny town, and state law is going to far exceed what we as a town would be able to support, so.
That was just a sample of what the charter amendment would require.
I just don't like the text there that says, I think there should be a number.
We'll have the attorney review that, yeah.
So.
So, um, the, um, question about promotion, um, once it's filed, um, that whole thing that, um, Mary and Renee were talking about, you know, these story maps or whatever they called them, about promoting things, um, who would do that, we'd have to contract with, not we, the city, because you can't help promote, so the city council would have to have its own budget? Or would that be considered the city promoting? How would we hire people, for example, to make, um, ads that would, I forget what you call them.
It's called.
Infomercials, infomercials, or whatever, or post them on social media, I mean, um, how do we do that if the city can't sponsor?
I believe we can create and provide the information, oh, no, never mind, we cannot.
Brady, what are you thinking, go ahead?
Yeah, uh, I've seen the one that they're, that they're referring to, and it was just kind of a comical way of, of, it was like somebody filmed somebody talking about topics.
Yeah, but that was just great, except I don't know.
Do you want to form any, um, what are, what are those things called?
They were like little, they were like links in there on their website, you can, like, it said, like, learn more about this topic, and then you click it on and.
And I guess the city could do that, because it's information, but you still have to produce the infomercials.
Yeah. Right, and they have somebody, they have.
Uh, pardon me, just to clarify, we, we actually can't do pretty much anything. The only thing we can do is, including using city pro, systems, can't speak it, phone meetings. Um, we can provide factual, neutral information, we can answer questions, prepare FAQs, so that's good, as long as they stay. To clarify what the measure would do, as long as the term is mutual and informative, so. Prepare FAQs, as long as they're factual.
So we can't put information on our website though, because that would require city staff to work, to publish something on the website, so we would not be able to put anything on the city's website.
Let me, um, check with the city of Toledo, they just passed some changes.
Well, Liz just, you know, with the school bond measure, she may be helpful in how we do that as well, yeah, that would be.
But it's something I think we should go forward with, um, if we're gonna be successful, you know.
Okay, so pardon me, the clarification is, we can put things on the city website as long as we are not encouraging a yes or no vote. As long as we're only providing information, the facts, we can, we can do that, okay? We just can't urge somebody to vote yes or no, yeah, or please do that, exactly.
So please do this or please do that.
It's, uh, it's a lot, you'll remember our New Shore Action Team project, it's a lot like that.
Yeah.
We did a video, and it went all over the place, we used to tell our story about the importance of fishing here.
Did you fill a pact?
Marine reserve.
Form a pact, is that? We did that, and your shore action team coordinated that.
Okay.
Jeff, um, um, Jeff Brown was, was very active in producing it. Um, but that was how that happened, you need to look.
So what, um, what I'm thinking, I mean, somebody needs to do it, but it just can't be staff, yeah.
Yeah, it can't be staff, yeah, um, outside of who will do what, timing. We were gonna do this in this May, and I mean, you know, it just.
Time is a bit.
No, no, but it doesn't matter, it was too fast anyway. But the general elections get a much more robust turnout, the May election is really only, only motivated people show up for that, and we may wanna look at the May election rather than the September election. So, um, and that, and that means we could prepare and have a lot more time to prepare.
Yeah.
So, because I think the burden's gonna fall on us, and I don't know who the us is.
Probably the us, the council.
And then, once we get a DMO, a direct marketing organization, perhaps they will have the skill set too, to help us with.
Well, you would have to contract with them separately, because that wouldn't.
Right, and the city can't provide any funding for that, right?
Correct.
So we would have to come up with our own budget and, um.
Yeah, they made, they made you guys do all the work.
Yeah, so, um, but I'm thinking, if we say yes, we like this idea, the timing, just because we're not gonna have a lot of time to enroll volunteers, might be better for May, and it might be in our benefit to have it in the May election.
Just an FYI, um, the letter of intent that you submit that go to D E Q. Just an FYI, um, the letter of intents that you submit that go to DEQ to tell them we're interested in doing this. They go, the, the terms are in August, so, or August, September, so the next, the letter of interest opens this August and September. So it won't open again until next August and September, so if we do the election in May, but we would still have that a year away, so we could even look at applying for it.
But that's only the, um, DEQ grants, I mean, once, once we have bonded, I mean, uh, debt authority.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there's like, um, um, low income housing, the workforce housing loans that the state has now. So there'd be a lot of opportunities once we get this through. Low to no cost loans and forgivable loans. That's gonna be how you sell it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think that we need to keep the focus extremely narrow.
Yeah.
And when I heard this before about talking about updating the charter, it was like, oh, we've got wording that needs to be changed here, and we've got other things that need to be there. I think we need to be very narrow in our focus, and have just a single, a single focus of being able to curate in this period, that's, that's the.
Oh, absolutely, we have not added anything.
That's the focus for it, on how I'm not trying to do all the other things.
Incurrative debt, but the examples might be.
Wired.
Be water and store.
Absolutely.
And, and it could be, and force housing, if you want to include that.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, so we'll just hold off until May, but both are.
No, I think we need to agree that we're, like, when we come back in city, actual city, right? I think we need to agree to move forward on this, but, so we can get lined up to start promoting it when we have a ballot.
I'll, I'll get information from the city of Toledo, how they.
Okay.
If we have consensus, we can move forward, I can get, get the, uh, draft and tell the city, our city attorney, which is not Mr. Blake, I'm using DWT because. They're really good.
Yeah.
Um, and get them working on that, so they can start looking at that and tell them what we're trying to do.
Okay.
Um. I don't know, right now, the statement just really focuses on infrastructure, I don't know if you wanna wrap it in the word of low income housing. I don't know if that.
Workforce.
Workforce housing might be a better sell than low income housing.
Yeah.
Like, because I know that people are really.
That's a hot one. No, no, workforce is, we have that Kent Street property, you know.
That would help you get that, I feel like it.
Yeah, so that's a great story.
I know, right, that's a better go.
That, the pictures, the whole story.
Yes. You could sell that one, I think, trying to just build the low income.
That one's way easy to sell, yeah. Yeah, so, um, this, this, do people like, I'm sorry.
No worries.
Um, do people like that word responsible, when I first read it, it seemed found, I kinda thought it was like, um, manipulative. And I don't know if there's a better word, or allows borrowing for infrastructure, somehow I've heard it.
We'll let the city attorney figure that out for us.
Yes, yeah.
But that's, that, that's not the role of an attorney, right?
Actually, that is a role of attorney, they wrote the ballot measures in Millenburg, and we have.
Okay, but I'm talking about just how the word sounds.
They will tweak it, and then you will get a chance to look at it, and if you don't like something in there, I have it in there, we'll probably rewrite the whole thing.
Okay.
So, but I do know for sure, they absolutely can't believe this, but for sure, they absolutely have to create the title.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So whatever the title they want, whatever he recommends is the title we.
I'll tell you, that's our part.
We have to, but the explanatory statement and all that other stuff, they can create that for us.
Okay, the responsible, the.
Maybe you want them to do that, because you wanna make sure it's a really good statement.
Yeah.
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 Because that's gonna help sell it.
Okay, on the odds, set, go?
I would agree with you.
You're starting.
You didn't eat? Bye, Autumn.